Okay, I'd like to call the August 2017 Work Session of the Board of Education to Order. First item, the 2017-18 Regular County High School Calendar. Let's go with Renee Doughty.
Good afternoon again. You don't look too closely, you won't see the paint all over our hands. We're excited about some of the changes going on at high school. We're bringing some red and black back. Not to let the cat out of the bag for them, but you've been busy painting, so. I think I'm here to help answer or clarify any follow-up questions before you. The next one on your table, the calendar that Sandy has sent out, has posted out on the district website to the changes to the Early Release Fridays. But I wasn't sure if you were wanting me to come back and present a little bit more about what those Fridays are going to look like, or if there were any questions I still need to clarify or answer for anybody about those Fridays. I'd be happy to do that.
I'm pretty clear on it, Renee. I think it would help for the public to know what that's going to entail.
Sure. So, an alert message is scheduled to go out tomorrow at 4:00 PM for the whole, our whole student body and parents. But I wanted to make sure, because I saw on the consent agenda was the calendar, so I didn't want to prematurely send anything out if something was going to change or you knew it was going to be to do something different. So that's going to explain to them that the emphasis of these Early Release Fridays will really be to improve core instruction for students. And that will give teachers time to do that on those Early Release Fridays. Also be able to provide us with perhaps some opportunities, and I specified that in the alert now message going out, that we hope to eventually be able to, not right off the bat, but start with remediation for small groups, individual students, also some job internships through our CTE department and job shadowing opportunities. So it will kind of lead to that in the future. Obviously, this, we're getting started. We're not going to have kids be able to go out and job shadow right off the bat. It takes time to build those partnerships through those programs. But our goal is for us to be able to collaborate, both with the early college high school, because I explained that our calendar will now match up, so that all secondary schools can collaborate and provide time for teachers to plan, collaborate with one another, also then to improve student, bring student-centered remediation support or enrichment activities. I mean, it's pretty much limitless what we could do with those Fridays. But it's going to take some getting going and getting our feet wet and figuring out what works for us, because we're not the early college, so it won't work the same for us. And we may see that we need a need for this on Friday afternoons that they may not have, because they're so much smaller. So it will be a work in progress, but we're excited about what the opportunities may be for these Friday afternoons.
Well, I don't know if I saw it from something personally from you, but I know you mentioned that you were trying to model it after what's going on with the early college and the fact that it was successful for them. So I think that in your work, it would be nice if you could say something about the fact that that's been so successful with remediation, such good progress from that, that we're trying to make. It just seems like that to me.
And we'll probably do that more in writing. So I got cut off the first time I recorded the alert now, because you only get like this much time. So it cut me off, so I had to redo it again, because I was trying to get as much detail as possible, but it keeps cutting me off. So when we post to social media, when we put on our website, we'll give all that explanation and explain that we modeled this. We've seen the success of what happens as a result here, and this is what we're going to do again. It will be a work in progress. We'll have things that will pop up, they'll be like, oh, we've got to think about this, but we will do that. It probably will be in that alert now message.
Yeah, now that I think about it, yeah.
And possibly encourage parents to schedule their children's appointments, if at all possible, on those early release days.
Absolutely.
All right, I have a question.
Sure.
Maybe not so much for you.
Okay.
What about the transportation? I am concerned about it. I'm concerned that it's going to impact some of the other services with the other schools possibly. Can anybody tell me how that's going to work out? And the follow-up question to that is, is it going to cost us more money to operate long after that?
Can you answer that part?
No, it won't cost us any more money. And part of Ms. Doughty's research and making sure that this is going to fly was making sure that transportation is going to be worked out and it wasn't going to add additional routes or anything like that. So I'm going to let Ms. Doughty talk.
So prior to even coming to you, we first said, okay, well, we're going to be on the roadblocks. So I called up Transportation and said, tossing around an idea, don't like, you know, think this isn't so or anything, but what would happen if we ran? Because currently, we share buses with Curry Tech Middle School. And he, and so I talked with Jimmy at Transportation. Jimmy walked me through, he's like, that would actually be better. Because what happens is, most drivers call out on Fridays. So he's always having his sub in with drivers. So if my driver, our drivers, between the early college and us are done, they can then come back and run the routes for the afternoons, and he's not having to look for other drivers. So that's what he told me on the first part. And then we talked about the Wednesdays, when the rest of the district will be on an early release, but we'll be on a full day schedule, because our early releases move to those Fridays. And again, he said, that's fine. He had already changed routes, so that we actually limit the number of shared buses between Curry Tech County Middle School and ourselves. And that was done before this was put in place. So I don't think the impact as far as impacting other schools will happen. The cost part, outside of my ballpark, so I'm not sure about that.
I'm confused as to how we have shared routes, okay? And then we don't have shared routes, and it didn't cost us any more money. I'm confused about that part. And I'm not trying to be, you know.
Sure.
Obviously, I'm a con for the Wester, still not a big fan of early release Fridays. Think we could have had a full day and then a off day, and a full day and an off day. And we could have had savings and I think a better quality of service. Now, that's my opinion. But I am concerned that we're going to somehow pay more money at the end of the day for half a day. I believe that. And I want to, actually, I'd like to see a report as to what buses were impacted and how this is not going to cost us more money. That's what I'd like to see.
I have a formal report from our Transportation Assistant to us, which was today, but I can't bring the report.
Because it sounded like it's going to free up drivers that would have called in. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we weren't going to pay for those drivers anyways. And so, how is it that we have shared routes and we don't have shared routes? And then it's not going to cost us money? Does that happen? If so, we should be doing it all year long, to save.
Well, hopefully with better efficiency. I don't know if Jimmy and I were able to look at stuff and say, these routes make better efficiency routes, and therefore, this is going to work out to be better.
Are they going to do that all week long, that way, anyways, if it's better efficiency?
They do that. That's my understanding, that he told me, is that he's changed the shared bus routes for those. I was assuming that just for all, not just Fridays. Right. Not all. We have buses for the early college, both them, the families, who's been there too. So they're already running on those days. So they're kind of, they're kind of, it's going to make their routes more efficient, because now they're going to be as filled with capacity.
What about the old situation where they were combining certain services, for example, to get to NOS out on the fair? What about those routes? And I'm assuming.
Corolla was the only one that was the impacted one, was the Corolla bus. Because that was my concern, is that we still have high school students that have to get all the way around Corolla in those shared services. But there's actually a bus that leaves from Jarvisburg that goes to Corolla as well. And so those students will not be impacted. They will, the middle school students will ride that Jarvisburg bus. So that didn't get impacted with that change. He said, I already got two buses going there anyway, it makes no difference what time the two buses go. One goes earlier and one goes later. It's still the same two buses that will be on that route.
And then the kids that, with the ten functions at the school, that whole timeline's going to bump up? Or are they going to be sitting around waiting?
Those are things that we're working out through all of our athletic department. So all of our coaches are aware of this, prior to our athletic director working on plans. Our football team already does it, even at three o'clock. They stay after school and do things with the teams. They have team meals, they have team movies, they have team something or others. So that timeline would get impacted for those kids who maybe can't drive home and drive back for a ballgame. And we're already considering those things.
And then, oh, final consideration without further doubt, that I will share is that a parent that might not necessarily want their child home and while they're still at work, even though they're a young, possible kid, close to it, although still a child. And because we don't have an attendance policy to set the bar for unexcused absences, I feel like it's going to promote people to not show up. I think, I'm not promoting. It's going to be more like, oh, we're only missing half a day. We're not missing a whole day. Because there's no attendance policy that says, hey, if you miss twenty or thirty underscruted absences, you failed. So we don't have that in place, and now we're putting in a component where it's a half a day. So I feel like we're going to have less people showing up, but I could be wrong.
As far as the kids going home without a parent being there because they're working, that's really not going to be any different since they're working. The parents are working the summer, and the kids are off in the summer.
The parents might make arrangements for the whole summer, but now they put in an extra burden. Now they've got to make an arrangement every Friday. That's what I'm telling you, the parents are concerned about it. I'm not saying they are. Now, what I'm saying is, now you're putting an additional requirement on throughout the whole nine months, not just the summer, but the whole year now.
Well, hopefully, it is going to do what you're hoping that it will do. Teacher quality instruction, all that good stuff for collaboration. And then the parents will jump on board, those that have concerns and feel that it's worth arranging.
What I'd like to think, that those parents that are genuinely concerned about what happens with their kid would fall and have conversations, because we can, we can refer to lots of different opportunities that may be there. And I have teacher assistants who are on staff, who may not be part of the professional development that we're going to be doing with teachers, who might could run study halls and enrichment opportunity with a science lab club, where they can do some science activities, those types of things. Again, that will be ready to roll at the moment we start school, but it could be something we develop to maybe ease those concerns for those few parents who want to make sure their kids are in an environment that's structured and safe. We could do this for the way that.
I always suggest that you share that through your presentations, because I think that would be a positive way of dealing with some of those situations.
Sure, absolutely.
Have you had that, Ms. Doughty, at the early college? Have you had problems on the early release day, parents being concerned that their child is going home alone?
Right. No, not to my knowledge. And I'll throw a monkey wrench in that a little bit more. Because we have students that stay after on Fridays from 12:30 to 3:20 to get additional help, and there's no consistency in general about which students are staying after. Johnny may stay after three Fridays and not the fourth. Mary may be here one. So even, it's not consistent to say, parents, your child will always be here on Friday or your child will only be here every, uh, the week. There's no consistency, because it's based on what the student needs. When the student struggles, we keep them after and we work with them. If they're doing fine, they don't need the extra help, they get to go home. But I haven't heard anything from parents related to, you know, it being upset that their child came home.
With all due respect to that, though, early college, you have to apply to get into. Curry-Tuck County High School, the state law requires you to attend. We were talking about not suspending people for not showing up to try to up the attendance. So, once again, you know, I was a teenager, you know. I know handling stuff around your parents might do something slightly different when your parents aren't there. I'm just saying, it gives an opportunity. Doesn't mean everybody will take it, but it gives an opportunity for people to get involved with stuff that they might not ordinarily, if they were on a closer schedule, to when their parents might be available. That's all.
Would probably be very much akin to a parent having pictures of them from the weather day.
Yeah, and I think it's challenging at best.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Doughty. Next item, Title I Approval. Sandy can do assistance superintendent.
Attached to our online agenda, I have placed a summary of the Title I program. Just give me a little bit of background, talking a little bit about then, how schools are going to be eligible and how to reform our plan based on the funds we receive. I hope you had a chance to read it, but the general public expects the funds that we receive. It's based on our number of free reduced lunch students, which is placed to poverty level. Once we get our allocation from the state, then we begin looking at individual student numbers. We can divide it out in grade standards. What we do is, because we receive a whole over $500,000. And obviously, the further you stretch it, the, really, the less impact it has on the ten schools. In order to receive funds, schools must need, they have to be above the district average for the free mager's lunch or poverty level. And so some of our schools don't qualify just straight out of the gate. No York Elementary is going to qualify. Some of our other schools, the high school and No York Middle School, they don't qualify, and Middleland College does not. So when it comes down to where we put the bank verb up and trying to raise the support and increase the success for our students in poverty, then we choose to place money and service our elementary schools in grade standard figures. So with that being said, then, once we determine the grade standard, then we look at the individual poverty rates for each of the schools, we put them in right order. And then funds are then allocated based on the number, the number of students that they have that fall within that early school. Once all the money is, is kind of farmed out, then that piece goes away. Then it becomes more about student needs. Who needs academic support? Whether they fall in that poverty band or not, then we reach out and we look to serve students that have an academic need. Once that is done, you know, then we just go ahead and collect, we collect data to evaluate the program. Private schools are also eligible to receive funding on the earlier share. So we do have Jarvisburg Christian that has participated with us in the past. They'll receive about $5,000 from our allocation. It's a percentage on the top, based on the number of students that have a comparable individual poverty that attenders. So bottom line is, I've given you all of those details. How we typically use our funds at the elementary schools that are eligible, we provide additional staff that support student academic needs. Rudy Recovery is part of that. We have a Rudy Recovery trained lead that goes in, and she's been phenomenal beyond just the Rudy Recovery teachers to up influence games in our foster development for our kids. But we also then work to find, work to provide teachers and teacher assistants that work with small groups and individual students that are impacted. And it ties uniquely into the whole multi-system, multi-tier system, so that we can deal with that. So with that being said, and we have some staff that will be paid for out of this funding, and I, there's definitely a question.
Is this upstate or are you seeing federal requirements?
It is. It was a little later this year, because of the ESSA, so they've extended, usually, I believe, two to three. They extended the deadline through almost eighteen, and that's the year we have to have the Rudy Recovery.
Do you have a question, Ms. Doughty?
Is this part of the consent process, anyway?
Yes.
All right, next item, staffing and budget update. Superintendent Stefano.
Thank you, Dr. Rodman, board members. I'm going to provide the annual staffing update here as we have, well, most of the district, about three weeks before the first school start. MAP opened its doors today, and from what I saw, passing by a few students in the hallway and a couple of staff members, successful first day, so they got out of the gates. Congratulations to the MAP staff for being ready at this early mark. But the staffing process, each spring and each summer, we are charged with filling any openings that we have in the district. And that responsibility falls squarely on the shoulders of Ann Mackin and the HR department. And so Ms. Mackin has this detailed Excel spreadsheet that keeps track of when things are posted, who transferred where and from where, and so you can keep track of where all the openings are. And so, Ms. Mackin, I'm going to give a short summary on where we've been and where we are.
I sure will. As every, if you, if you're in the school system, you realize that a certified employee, during January, I would say, or beginning of February, we send out intent forms to all of the employees. And on the intent form is, are you planning on retiring or come back to the school system? So at that time, I start really understanding who is going to be retiring from the school system. And so we start this spreadsheet that we start immediately, so that we know what schools we have to find new employees for. This year, we have it broken down to schools, and I think right now, we're doing pretty good on filling our vacancies. We had numerous retirements. We had quite a few, not quite a few individuals, but many that lived in Dare County that ended up getting positions in Dare County, moving or teaching in the county they live in. And as we're aware of, that happens yearly. And I know that I've looked over, I think we went back five years on the turnover report, and it's probably, the percentage is very close. One year, that had to be about four years ago, might have been 13%. Almost all the other years are very consistent with 11%. We've had quite a few, not quite a few, I shouldn't say quite a few, because we only had 11% pretty much, but people that moved away from the area because of family needs. Parents that needed assistance, or because of military, meaning that the husband was being transferred or the wife was being transferred to another area. So that's a lot of why the transfers took place. Right now, when I look at the high school, I have about three positions to still fill at the high school. It was neat when I walked in here this afternoon. I know that the two middle schools have interviewed, and they actually found a music teacher that they would like to offer the position to, which of course, you know, I ran a criminal background check, looked over the references and all that.
And could you address one of the concerns that you ran out there about why teachers retire or leave the district and the report that, you know, you get from the state?
I do a teacher turnover report every year, and that goes from March of the prior year till March of the current year. So people have to understand that I'm not sometimes looking at the current summer or the summer or the May date when everybody, when I'm looking at, what is it, positions to fill for that following year. But when you look at the majority of positions now, I mean, I've one year in the last five years, I think I had 13 retirements. This year, when I look from the March to March date, it was 10 retirements. As everybody knows, that this is the age of now baby boomers. Us baby boomers are starting to have done the amount of time now that we can now look at retirement. And I mean, I was with Janet, teaching right with her, and, and look, you retired, and I didn't still. But, but I'm going to say that soon, right. But if you look at us, we've all, all at that time, it just seems like the, in the other areas, I mean, people that live in Dare County, which is on one side of us, or if you look at the Chesapeake, sometimes we have people from the Chesapeake area, but mostly it's Dare County. And oftentimes, if we have people that live in Kitty Hawk, and they come to work for us for some years, they might have young children, then their children are starting school. They try to get back into the Dare County. And when I speak to people that are leaving our system, this year, the majority of people was retirement or because they, they were moving to Dare because they live there. That was my majority of what, why people were moving. I did have a couple of health issues, too, of why individuals had to move.
Do we do exit interviews now?
I do. On, on the resignation form, there are numbers that you, you put in. It's automatic where you book, and I, I've got generic things that we place on that. That matches the turnover report. But this year, I've been calling individuals to ask them, you know, can you help me? And just so that I'm sure, I understand, is everything okay, you know? And pretty much, they're putting on that form exactly what, what they're feeling. Now, of course, if somebody can't finish getting their license and haven't done the coursework because they were lateral entry to complete their license, I cannot, cannot employ them the following year. Sometimes that does happen. And also if, and again, I'm not saying this doesn't happen either, if somebody, because of documentation, is telling us, somebody is not doing a good job in their, their employment, that's what our evaluation instrument helps with, and then at times, that does happen, not often, because we have principals that stay on top of that with action plans. Our goal is to help everybody we hire, due to the fact that we wouldn't be hiring you if you weren't, didn't prove to us that you would be a good employee. So we're going to do what we can to have you improve in the jobs that you're in. And then, but if still, if you don't, how do I say it? If you don't perform where you should be, and your task force are telling us that, that this isn't the job for you, oftentimes, they'll resign, or oftentimes, our evaluation is going to tell us we can't do here. But the majority, I'm going to say this year, this, this current year, the last two years were retirement and people moving to the areas they live in.
I mean, I'm not sure about the teachers particularly, I don't think you could protect them, but like, some of the people that left, I did speak with, and they were, you know, administrative, and they got contracts, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. And is there like a cash buyout if they want to get out of the contract early if we're not dissatisfied with their service, but yet they want to leave? For not a health issue or something that would be considered an excusable termination in the contract? Or are we just having a contract that only protects the employee, that doesn't protect the school system? Because I'm curious about that.
We're, we're, if somebody is killed, there's federal laws that help them, and that's the Family Medical Evac?
Yes, ma'am, I'm mentioning other than that. I'm saying, are there cash buyouts for somebody that just wants to go work somewhere else? So they just want to terminate the contract because they found something better, or they want to do something else? What is our, other than the system, what is our recourse? How, how does the contract protect the school system?
They have a 30-day, they have to give us 30 days, meaning that gives me time to try to find another employee for that position. So that's a clause in our contract that they give us 30 days notice. I don't think, and.
If they choose to leave.
If they choose.
They're going to have, I mean, you're.
So if we want to give them 30 days, do we have, is it both ways? Or do they just have a contract that says that they got a contract for a certain amount of money for a certain amount of time, and they're protected, but the school system is not? Because they could give us 30 days' notice. I'm just curious.
Well, we had agreed with documentation that they were not performing their job then at the end of the contract. We're curious. We're not reviewing.
During the contract, they could give us 30 days' notice and leave.
Correct.
But we cannot give them 30-day notice if we choose to terminate the service for any reason like, they might choose to leave, right?
Right, no.
Okay. And we don't require them to pay us anything other than to give us a 30-day notice to, to end the contract.
There would be no purpose to that.
What's the purpose of the contract, is what I'm asking? Why don't we just have them as employees? Why do we do that? I don't understand it.
It's job protection for them for the year.
Yes, ma'am.
But as long as they're doing a good job, that we used to have tenure, and I think you know, because of legislature, how tenure is no longer. So that was an ongoing contract. But go ahead, I, I maybe I'm not understanding.
All, all risked to protect, and I don't want them to have a fair shake. What I'm asking is, how does that benefit the school system? When they can give you 30-day notice, and there's no, the school system's disrupted. I'm asking, why do we even give a contract? Why don't we just say, okay, if you like a job for a year, here we give you a job? Why do we enter in a contract where the school system doesn't seem to have any real benefit by doing so? I'm asking from a flip side here.
I, I think it's a binding document that says, you're staying with us for this school year.
Okay.
And, and I'm going to say that people that have a good work ethic are going to live by their contract.
Yes, ma'am.
And I am going to say, I, I have not had any difficulty with it. So I've been very lucky that we haven't had difficulty with it.
Well, we had a subtle leave this year, okay? And it's my understanding, based on information I looked at, that particularly, we have a high turnover rate in some of these higher positions, okay? Higher than 11% when you start looking at, I think, assistant principals and principals. I think it's all related to that. And so it's higher than the state act. And so thus, I would ask, what we can do to make an adjustment to the contract to make it equally as beneficial to the school system as it seems to be to the employee or the contractor? Because what I'm seeing is, if all you got to give is 30 days' notice, and you don't have to give a reasonable excuse other than you just don't want to do it anymore, I think there ought to be something else. They may be, well, maybe we could tour around with a cash buyout, that they have their. They may be, well, maybe we could tour around with a cash buyout, that they have their other, wait, that's how it works in the business world.
Yeah, but it's, if we did anything like that, they would not want to even apply to current account of schools, because your surrounding counties are going to offer them a position for the year with the contract, and when I hire an employee, if they're not satisfied working for me, I don't want them there. And I don't want to force them to stay working with me, because they're not going to do a good job. They're going to be miserable, they're going to make everybody else miserable around them. So I'd like to accept their resignation, and, madam?
And I respect that aspect, but why have a contract then? I have to go back to that. Why don't we just have a joint review?
Why is it to give contracts?
It's the state.
And multi-year contracts are, you know, it's what parents say, but it is, it's an incentive that the district is giving them time to, you know, establish yourself and do the job. And so the district is offering an incentive to the employee, or it is employee favorable heading, that is employer.
I know Anne talked about, you know, losing some folks to neighboring counties and what have you, and over the years, I told several fine teachers from neighboring counties, and they were with us because there was not an opening in their home county. They came here, they were awesome teachers, they did a great job, but the minute they could get in their home county, they left us.
Anne, can I say that, if I'm not mistaken, you have one that's going on board right now, that's coming back to her home county because she didn't get a job until this year. So we're doing this right for us.
Anne, where do we stand right now with openings?
With openings? At our high school, do you want to total, or you want me independently through schools?
Just totally.
Okay, I've got it. Eleven openings for our district right now.
Certified?
Certified openings, correct.
I did my part, Alex, that's nature. None of those are-
I didn't speak with all those people.
Exactly, district schools that we, and a couple of them, and I'm lucky enough that I've got another person to look at when I get back to the office that will fill one of those positions.
And I appreciate you doing that, but I'm going to tell you, I didn't speak with all those people, but I spoke with a couple of them, and it was a common thread through the conversations I had with them. And it wasn't because they weren't moving back to where they wanted to live, and it wasn't because of they really wanted to go live somewhere else. It was morale, transparency, morale, workload. That was the common theme of the people I've been talking to. So also, they indicated that they weren't sure about the exit review process, that they didn't feel like that, not you, but the system wasn't listening to what they wanted to say.
Okay, when you have six hundred, how many employees do we have? Are we six hundred, six hundred and fifty, somewhere near? You're gonna have a disgruntled employee along the way.
Yes, sir.
They're not all going to be, you know, happy employees, and that's, okay, you're gonna have a disgruntled one or two.
When you've got four hundred and fifty-two students?
Are they the rule, or are they the exception? When you talk to two, out of all the people that have resigned?
Yeah, but workload, when you've got four hundred and fifty-two students you're dealing with?
I spoke to a couple as well, but what I was hearing, you know, one was, I'm going home, and another one was, Virginia pays for Mounts first. I mean, that, you know.
We're aware that there are multiple reasons why people leave the department, and again, there are eleven or twelve categories I have to report that we have to send to the state. But to go along with the ones that, you know, had some concerns, if they listed those on the recent staff survey, those staff surveys are being reviewed by district and building administrators, just so we can be aggressive about issues.
Is it possible to do a face-to-face exit interview with, you know, possibly Anne, and maybe a principal, and maybe even a board member? You know, maybe we can get around it that way.
Right, and where you start, you know, Anne started calling and talking.
And I invite, I constantly invite people in to talk to me, too, my door is always open. And again, some will, you know, bring it to me and tell me, others don't. I get an email, and then, you know, I'll call and-
Anne, I have doubts for that, because I worked under Anne, and Anne's door is open. I know I went through that door a couple times.
Well, typically, by the time they resign, it's a mutual, they've made their decision, and, you know.
But if we could learn something, take help.
It would be nice to know, but I'm not sure it needs to be so elaborate every day.
If we could find ways, if there's something we can improve upon and help our employees, I would call it.
I think we certainly should take away something when they leave and learn something. We should, you are foolish to not try to understand why they want to leave.
And I think we do a good job with that, especially tonight, we have our, I want to call them our, not staff meetings as much as our administrative meetings, we meet in groups, we discuss a lot of different things that are happening in each individual school, and it's neat. Elementary will meet together, middle together, and high together, but also, we also look at how they're going to align going into the next level. And that sometimes is difficult for students. Our goal with students, a hundred percent here, and it's hot to train our faculty, our staff, all of our students come first, and we're going to do the best we can to get our students to the next level, to pass the test that they have to pass, but also get them career-ready and teach them, and this is a very big priority. I don't want to say professionalism, but to be, have manners, how to talk to individuals, public speaking, things like that, that are real-world skills. And I noticed teachers in classrooms, all the way to the early college, that do a great and terrific job with that. So that, the students that leave our schools, when they say where they're from, Currituck, you can tell. And it's something we're very proud of. And I think we were hard at trying to make our faculty and staff, and I don't want to be, say the word happy, I want to say, say, like being here, they're coming to school excited about teaching our population. And I think all principals and assistant principals try very hard to have an environment and a culture in the school to have people want to be there.
Well, we have a lot of information, so we're not-
I'm sorry, I'm talking about-
Thanks, Anne. To give some public kudos to Anne and the folks that have been supporting her, she's been without her right-hand person through this big HR boom time. You know, that office has hopped over the summer, and she's blown out of her system, so she's been running around, but other central office folks have pitched in and tried to be a support net underneath her so we can get this important hiring process in, and by the time school starts. All right, the other part we wanted to do is give a budget update. As folks may know, the budget has been a topic of discussion, both at our meetings and at some of our local county commissioners' meetings, but we wanted to give some up-to-date information on where we stand going into this budget year. And, Laurie, want me to give the preview, or do you want to take it from the government?
Instantly.
Okay. In our allocation this year, from the county commissioners, we have an increase in our allocation of, what, two hundred and two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars? That's the top number on the PowerPoint.
If those add.
So again, that is the increase from the allocation we got last year compared to this year's allocation. First grouping of items there are increased costs that will impact our local budget. Items one, two, three, and four are all tied to changes or mandates that came out of Raleigh, out of the General Assembly. And so those items take out almost four hundred thousand dollars, additional money out of our local offers.
One, two, five?
One, two, three, and five. Number four is a local item that has been highly recommended to us with protection of cyber information or information in cyberspace. There's a high recommendation to have insurance to cover, to make sure that your information is secure. And then we have down at the bottom, two more local additional expenditures this year that weren't on the books last year. So the grand total comes up to five hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars of increased costs, costs we did not have during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year budget, they're there now. The middle section, we have savings or reductions to offset some of the increased costs. There was work done by the finance office to bid out insurance policies, and we did end up saving over thirty-five thousand dollars on those policies, and so congratulations to them for finding those new policies. We went and reduced some positions in the district. Some of them were due to attrition, some of them, we did some transfers to make those reductions, and all those reductions come to almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then, a various list of reductions to different district line items, we were able to find another hundred thousand dollars. And so total savings comes to three hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So we take the increase to the budget, and the savings and the reductions to offset an increased cost, and then we subtract out the increased cost to the budget, we start the school year with about sixty-eight hundred dollars worth of additional dollars in our local budget, you know, from the commissioners. So we tried to do what we could with savings and reductions to try to offset as many of the increased costs as we could, but between that number and the increased money from the commissioners, we were able to offset all that money and save just around seven thousand dollars in the increased allotment. Anything to add, Ms. Tresson?
We'll still have to use a specific amount to balance the budget from the fund balance.
Yes. Our goal here was to make sure that new costs didn't impact what we were taking out of the fund balance, so our goal is to try to just mimic this year, which would be eight hundred thousand dollars coming out of the fund balance. With that being said, just as an informational article to, or an informational item to folks in attendance here, folks that are watching the tape, we've had two or three articles show up in the newspaper that were summaries of some discussions that had happened at county commissioners' meetings. As I told one reporter, I don't want to have the discussion between me and a reporter, and then back to the commissioners, and then the commissioners to the reporter, and back to the school district. I want to try to open up lines of communication, you know, between the county manager, the county commissioners, and the school district. And so what I've done over the last week is taken information that has shown up in the articles that were topics raised at the commissioners' meeting, and tried to clarify some of those items with the county manager. And so over three emails, well, two emails and a draft email that the Hoagie will brought tomorrow, tried to address items that were either inaccurately stated or inaccurately understood by commissioners, or not completely described in the newspaper articles as they were shared by commissioners. And so I put those items out. Biggest piece that needs to go out there, there was a comment in one of the articles that said, "The commissioners have been asking questions for eight months, and they haven't received any information from the school district." What I did to make sure that all that information was in one spot, I downloaded any document that has been either hand-delivered to commissioners, or electronically sent to the county manager to be shared with commissioners, I put all those items into one email and sent them back to the county manager, just stating, "Here is all the information that we've provided since February, since the joint meeting." And so all that information is there about the budget. The other piece was, in several articles, there are statements that the commissioners were going to get all their questions together, send them to the county manager, and then the county manager could send them to the school for response. Asking for that list, so that we have all the documented questions that the commissioners have, and we can answer them one by one and send that exact information back to the county commissioners. So trying to open up that line of communication, using the county manager's office and the superintendent's office to be the clearinghouse of questions and answers, and trying to get all the information to the school board members and the county commissioners that both groups need.
Any pieces of that information you're going to share? While you're looking, let me digress another issue. Just mentioning that thing in one of the articles, about the hundred thousand dollars that the school board requested for the CPE, or vocational programs, CPEs, the terminology for it. The commissioners had asked us, "Is there anything additional that you would like to request in the two years of the financial biennium?" And we decided to ask for a hundred thousand dollars for the job shadowing and internship program. And I'll digress for just a minute. Karen was on the board, Juan was on the board, we've been talking about increasing our vocational, the CPE offerings for the last couple of years, and what direction do we need to take? Because we feel with two hundred, two hundred and fifty housing starts for the next twenty years, that we would be doing our district, our students and our community a disservice if we don't provide the additional, you know, vocational programs in electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and those areas that have to do with construction. Because students can learn a very valuable skill, and if you've ever hired a plumber or an HVAC person, know they get pretty darn well. And so that's what we want to do for our students and our communities. And that kind of piggybacks on, you know, the community needed fire and rescue people. So we started fire and rescue, you know, vocational program, to help the community out. And this is just another attempt on the part of the board to, you know, provide better education for some of the students. And by the way, at the end of their certification, they aren't going to have all the college expenses that college-bound students have. So that's one bonus. Plus, if you make enough, you know, barely even paying wage when they go into the, yeah, right, they're going into the community. So that being said, a lot of students don't know what's out there. They don't know what an HVAC person is, what they make, what they do, or an electrician, or a plumber. We have all those people on staff here within the county schools. So we thought if we could start a job shadowing program, where we could place some of our students with some of our employees, they could go around and see, what does a HVAC person do, what does a plumber do? And also, tell them, you know, you go through a program like this, you can make this much money. Also, in the second year of the program, we would provide an internship for them, where they could actually work with some of our employees. And we checked out the insurances and that, and found out that, you know, we can do it. And so some of that money would go to provide a small stipend for not only our employees but kids, you know, to do this internship program. And so that is where this hundred thousand dollars came from, and we were just complying with a request of the commissioning. Is there anything else that you wanted included that's over the school board? And that's where this hundred thousand dollars came from. As far as the whole program, you know, we've been discussing this for two years, CLA is finally moving, I think it's first year, the electrical program, we're moving back to Wismar City, and the next year, the HVAC program, and both those programs were located in E- were located in Eastwood, which was very in the mean for us. But we already have students at Naperville College going to, you know, over the CLA, so, you know, we could take advantage of that. As far as, you know, down the road, if we ever did decide to repurpose a school, you know, if we looked at an elementary, an elementary school, might step up the tide to build it. An elementary school's going to cost maybe 10 to 15 million dollars. But, you know, we'd be moving kids from a high school into the repurposed school, and which means we wouldn't have to build a high school anytime soon. And a new high school's going to cost you 50 to 65 million dollars. So we would actually be saving the county money by doing this program. But like I said, this is still in the initial talking phases. We're still looking to provide, you know, this for our students and community.
And that actually was one of the items that sang, that the internship program was our starting point. And as we saw the program develop and the program grow, and more people get interested in CTE-type offerings, then it might, you know, lend itself to the discussion about, is it outgrowing its space at a very tough high school, and do we need to put it someplace else? But that's down the road a bit, and, you know, those discussions are just very preliminary, and it was like a brainstorm timeline, you know, type of thing, and, you know, we're not requesting those funds currently. We're just trying to get the internship program off the ground.
Any other items?
Well, there's one item in here that I think could describe, and again, I don't want to play it out in the media, nothing against the media, but, you know, they're here, they're here, they're right there. Nothing against them, but effective decision-making, effective problem-solving is face-to-face and with the people involved, and so not with intermediaries. But one comment in here that there might have been a bit of information that led to a misunderstanding. There was a comment, a concern that said that some teachers don't know that they have a contract until August, and so I think the next line was, "So yeah, they'll pick another school district if they can find out earlier that they have a job." Well, Anne looks good, but I know Anne's tired. And I know Anne's tired, but all summer we've been offering contracts as we find people. We get on the phone, we make the offers, and we try to finalize the hirings. The only piece of that that I think might have led to some of this, you have a June board meeting, and you have an August board meeting. You know, so officially, the board doesn't act on the personnel report in July, but once Anne offers and I sign off on it, that's a, that's a rock-solid, you know, offer to the candidates. And so people have been moving here, relocating families off of, Anne and I talking to them before they're, you know, on the actual personnel report, six hours, you know, at the board meeting. So it happens all spring, it happens all summer, and then we get the names on the personnel report at the next available board meeting. And so people don't have to wait till August unless something happened in late July, and we're just offering a contract like this afternoon with the music person. That person had to wait till August because he just introduced.
And what about our current employees?
Yeah, existing staff, they know by, is it June 1st?
Right. And that was the beginning of the article, that, you know, by state law and board policy, we have to act on renewing and/or extending contracts by June 1st. And so those things show up at the May board meeting, and so the vast majority of our staff members know before this school year's over their status.
And everybody has already signed those contracts, so that was very organized this year, and it's, I mean, I'm very proud to say that's, the people that belong to us right now, they're contracted.
And so again, there may have been, yeah, there may have been a piece of information, and then that misunderstanding grew. That's why we've got to get the lines of communication open between the county office and the school district to make sure these things can be, you know, answered quickly, and so they can get accurate information.
Anne, we met at the end of June, so it wasn't like we had a June 1st meeting or a Thursday.
Right, right, they're close together. Right, right. So, you know, again-
It wouldn't have mattered, it would have been like a week.
Right. If there's somebody around the week of the 4th of July, and we offer them a contract, and they believe that, you know, they're still in limbo until, you know, the board acts on that contract, those people may have to wait a couple of weeks, but there's no delay in the offering of the job and solidifying that person on our staff.
I'd just like to echo to Ms. Trussell. Thank you for finding the nearly $36,000 on the insurance savings. I'd say I'd like to thank you once again for finding that savings on the work of Ms. Comp, you know, auto and garage insurance, nearly $36,000. I thank you personally. And I'd love to ask you, Mr., I forgot your name, Mr. Media Specialist, I apologize.
O'Brien-Polt.
Ms. O'Brien. Whatever became of the language that we were going to include for the revised policy on the books?
My understanding is in the new handbooks, I'd be in the underwriting.
Okay, because I thought we were going to look at it before.
I'll go back here and give that information to you.
Thank you.
Did you have another, was it like the unbalance or anything?
We were going to, there's not that in the next meeting.
Oh, you're on?
Yeah.
No, no. Next.
Any questions or comments?
All right, I'd like to, as a point, since there's nothing else, adjourn the work session, and see what's left of the board meeting.
2017 meeting of the Board of Education to order, first item in vocation, Ms. Kraft?
Yes. This comes from "Nurturing Faith WordPress on the Internet." Seeing and Being Seen: A Devotion for a New School Year. One of the things that summer does for us in the education profession is to restore our sight. We can easily lose our perspective as we near the end of the year. It is a challenge to staying focused as the tasks mount up. Summer gives us time to reflect, to see into the future, to look back, to see through some past problems, people, to soul-search about any blind spots and logs, and to look into things that help us gain our balance and give us new hopes and dreams. At the beginning of a new year, I encourage you to think about seeing. Will you take the time to truly see your students, parents, and colleagues, and enter into their worlds? Will you recognize Jesus when he shows up in your school? Are you seeing the good or the bad in others? It likely depends on where you are focusing. Are we seeing beauty all around? It is essential that we help students see it, as beauty engages us and entices us to learn more. Beauty is critical to the learning process. Will you take the time to see the needs of the world around you, and through your keen sight, provoke the missional imaginations of your students, to help them truly see as Jesus saw? Do you have a vision for the future impact, the way God's can use each of those whose hearts and lives you have the opportunity to deeply impact? And this is a little insert. At the beginning of the year, I encourage you to think about being seen, not in the showy attention-getting way that we first think about when we use the words "being seen." Let me give you an example of what I mean. In his wonderful book, Nudge, Leonard Sweet tells this story. Many decades ago, some men were panning for gold in the state of Montana. The prospectors organized themselves into an informal cooperative and agreed upfront that if they would strike gold, they would tell no one about their find. After weeks of hard panning and digging, one of them found an unusual stone. Breaking it open, they were excited to see that it contained gold. Soon, the prospectors discovered an abundance of the precious metal. They began shouting, "We found it, we've found gold, we've struck it rich." They then proceeded to go to a nearby town for additional supplies. Before leaving camp, they reminded each other of the pledge of absolute secrecy. While they were in town, none of them breathed a word about their good fortune. However, when they were getting ready to return to camp, they were horrified to discover several hundred of the local townsman preparing to follow them. And when they asked who had revealed the secret of their discovery, the answer came. No one had to, your faces showed it. How do you wish to be seen this year? What will students, colleagues, and parents see in you? Thank you.
Thank you. We're usually led by a student in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to call on our only female student board member, Jenna, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, one of my favorite times of the year, the swearing-in of our new student board members, Kealan Hartman and Colin Coffey. By Ray Matusko, the clerk of court.
I'd like to thank the school board for inviting me out to do this, I really enjoy this. It's truly, you know, the same one will come up. Come on up, Dan. Put your left hand on the button, reach your right hand. Do you, Kealan Hartman, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are and may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God.
I do.
And do you further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will perform the duties of the office of student board member for the Curritah County School Board to the best of your knowledge, seal, and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Kealan, Colin, congratulations. We look forward to working with you and your input on the board.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, approval of the agenda. Before I ask for the approval, I want to move or add an item, the revised classified pay scale, and I'm going to put that at D1.
Could we also pull six, or have six set out on the consent agenda?
Okay.
To talk about it separately?
All right. We'll pull item six, the 2017-18 Curritah County High School calendar, out of the consent agenda, and we will make that item E1.
Excuse me, Dr. Dobney, E2?
What?
There is an E1. E2?
Oh, well, I made the other one D1, and there's already a D. D nothing.
But we have an E1.
Yeah, we have an E category.
Which is the next page.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, E2.
D2?
E2.
E2.
Even though it's not a field trip.
I was going to say, it's not a field trip, but-
But it's a contest.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I motion.
Do I have a second? Have a motion second? Any further additions or deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, public comment session, no one signed up. So we'll go to item C, student board member reports. Jenna and Tyler?
There are no reports for this evening, but I would like to welcome our new board members. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys have had a great summer. I know I have. Currently, since most of the schools haven't been in session yet, we don't have any reports from the principals. However, I too would like to congratulate both our new student representatives, and hope we have a great start to our year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler or Colin, any information from day one at JP Nat?
There was a lot of rushing, I will say that. The orientation did go well, and you can tell people were excited to get back into school. So I do think it went very well for our first day.
Did either of you take any courses over the summer, or?
I did, yes. I took British Literature over the summer. It was a, it was a nice course. It was definitely different than what I expected. So it was, it was definitely an interesting course, and I think I did benefit from it.
Good, thank you. All right, item D, school budget update. Superintendent Stefanik?
Thank you, Dr. Dobney, fellow board members, audience members. We gave a school budget update during the work session, and I'll just give a brief summary of that update. We use state funding and local funding to finance the operations of the school district. The last several years, and I think we went back at least 11, the school district has had to rely on what we call a fund balance, i.e. mini-savings account, to balance the budget and maintain all the programs that we offer for our students throughout the district. This year, we had some concerns because state law was changing, and because we pay for some of our staff with local funding, anything that happens with state law that has to do with salaries and benefits impacts our local budget. So we started off with a $200,000 increase from the commissioners in our annual allocation, and we found that state law was going to impact our local budget to the tune of about $400,000. There were a couple other local decisions that added about another $100,000 to that, so we had $500,000 in new expenses to our, our local budget. We did some cost-saving measures, and we were to say, we were able to save a little over $300,000 while not decreasing or eliminating any programs or opportunities for students, and that's our goal anytime we do budget reductions. So we're, between the $300,000 in savings and the $200,000 in additional funds from the commissioners, we were able to cover the $500,000 in new expenses to the local fund, and, and end up with just about $7,000 left over. And so we start the year with $7,000 more than we had last year at the beginning of the school year. Again, when you're talking about millions and millions of dollars, $7,000 is not a big number, but at least it's got a plus sign in front of it. So it's a little bit more this year than we had last year.
Thank you. Next item, the revised classified pay scale. Did you and Lori want to do this, or?
Yeah, I could talk a little bit, and then Lori, you want to add in anything I missed? Okay. You want to come up to the microphone just in case I need you?
Could I just say something about the budget real quick?
Sure.
All right. I'd, I'd like to just acknowledge that Ms. Trussell and her department helped us find nearly $36,000 in savings in the work of Ms. Comp and auto and garage insurance policies alone. And so I personally want to thank her and the others to help with that, because that's $36,000 more than we had years prior, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I really called you up there to the microphone, because that means you know I'm going to need you to answer some questions about the new pay scale.
For at least a year, if not longer, we have been studying the classified or the Yeah, I could talk a little bit, and then Lori, you want to add in anything I missed? Okay. You want to come up to the microphone, just in case I need you?
Could I just say something about the budget real quick?
Sure.
All right. I'd like to just acknowledge that Ms. Trussell and her department helped us find nearly $36,000 in savings in the work miss comp and auto and garage insurance policies alone. And so, I personally want to thank her and others to help with that, because that's $36,000 more than we had years prior, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I really called you up, there's a microphone, because that means you know I'm going to need you to answer some questions about the new pay scale. For at least a year, if not longer, we have been studying the classified or the non-certified salary schedules. We found that not only were, there were, there's some misalignments inside of our own schedules with our own staff members, but we found out when we checked with other school districts, our pay scales have been frozen for so long, roughly nine years, that our staff members were not being compensated at the same level as comparable employees in neighboring school districts. So, we wanted to become more in line with that, and so we created a pay schedule that complies with the state policy that says that you could do five-year spans between, is it between steps or between...
Yes.
Between steps? So, you can do up to a five-year span before somebody can move up to the next step. So, we created a scale that covers all of our classified and non-certified employees except bus drivers, because they're on a separate pay scale, and then it will align our internal staff members, i.e., people that have been working for the district for the same amount of years. Now, they'll be compensated at similar rates if they're doing the same job, and will be more competitive and comparable to our neighboring school districts. So, again, for the fairness and the business side of it, it's needed, but also just a respect and a thank you to the employees that have been doing a nice job for us for many, many years. It's time for them to receive raises in their departments. Ms. Trussell?
We also rolled in the 4% classified supplement into the pay scales, so we will no longer going forward have the supplement for classified employees, but it is in the pay scale. We're giving one-for-one for outside experience, and this should help with retention, morale, and getting quality new hires. It'll enable us to be competitive with, for the employee market.
Okay.
Any questions?
Did Michelle help with this?
Michelle did, and I brought her, she's here tonight. She was, she's done a lot of work on this, because every person had to be hand-calculated, and where we slot them, we had to go back and relook at the grades where we had everybody placed, and this is, we worked on this about three years ago, and this time, we're finishing it, and I hope this will last you for many years going forward.
Great.
And there is...
Stand up and come up to the microphone.
Okay.
Come on.
She has done a lot.
Okay, and this is Michelle Chambers, and she is our payroll clerk?
Supervisor.
Supervisor? Okay. I was close.
There is an initial cost to the budget to implement these changes, but they were in our calculations that I just gave you, and so that $7,000 to the good is still sitting there, even after these salary alignments.
Well, in our meeting earlier today, one of the things that became apparent to us is we could have two people doing the same job, having the same amount of experience, and their pay is like skewed really badly, so that just wasn't fair to the rest of, to the staff, so that's one of the reasons why we did that.
I would just like to personally thank you both for the hard work and dedication that you have for our schools and for our budget. I mean, I know you work tirelessly, many, many hours, days in and day out, and I thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Anne Macken, HR Director, helped us with this, too, so...
And Melissa.
And some of the directors. We've had a lot of help, because this is a really big project. We appreciate you allowing us to go forward.
We appreciate you.
And I'm sure all of these folks on this pay scale thank you as well.
You're gonna make some folks really happy.
They have no clue yet, so...
How many total employees were affected by this increase?
About 130 employees are on this scale, and approximately 82...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven are going to receive raises.
So, they don't even know that you're working on it? Ooh.
No, that's not something you want to let out.
Until it's finished.
Yeah, we had to make sure you would approve it, and we'd like for it to be effective August 1st, so that this first run that will have the 10-month employees in it will include this. Yes, you're gonna have some happy folks.
That's great.
Lot of your TAs.
So, in the vote, we need to make a retroactive to August 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I do want to add, all classified employees received $1,000 state raise this year, plus the 4% supplement. That's all in here, so everybody's getting a raise. Some are getting more.
Okay.
To make it compare.
Right.
Okay, do I have a motion that we approve the revised classified pay scale effective August 1st?
A motion that we approve. And a second?
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, approved field trip request.
To date, we have one field trip request. Currituck County High School requesting going to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana in late October.
And they have the appropriate chaperones and...
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Swain has already met with all the parents. I'm one of them.
Are you going?
No, I'm not going, but she's met with all parents.
And I believe, not that it has anything to do with anything, but I think it was easier getting chaperones, because aren't all the attendees this year one gender?
Yes.
Yeah.
All girls.
All females this year going to the FFA convention.
That's interesting. Yeah, that's interesting.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the FFA field trip to Indianapolis?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the field trip is approved. Next item, the CCHS calendar. Okay, I just guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Krotick, since he's the one that wanted it pulled out. Do you have some concerns about it, or...
Yeah, I just, I'm concerned about a lot of things. Mostly, I'm concerned that we're gonna have an early release day every Friday. I'm concerned that we're gonna wind up spending more money. Now, they're telling me not, but we'll find out. I'm scared that we're not gonna offer the same level of service, okay? And I'm also concerned we're gonna spend more money in doing so. And I'm concerned that we could have had a full day and then a off day, alternating every Friday, if we so chose, instead of that, and offered a savings to the school system. So, we're struggling with a struggling budget, and I feel like there was ways to meet in the middle, to achieve these planning days. So, I'm concerned about these things, and that's why I wanted this pulled out, because I'm not in favor of it, and I will not be voting for it. So, I want to offer the same level of service or higher, and I'm concerned that a half-a-day is not going to produce the level of service we need to be providing.
What do you mean by same level of service?
I mean, I don't think we're gonna get the same quality impact on two half-days that we would with one full day. That's what I believe in my heart, and so that's why I want to tell people how I feel, and I want them to understand that a lot of parents, well, maybe not, maybe I'm way off-touch with this, but I don't think the majority of the parents I spoke with will really want their children coming home at a half-a-day. They don't understand. I mean, the ones I've spoke to, and I could be way off-base, well, time will tell, but I'm not, I'm not in support of half of anything.
Can I speak?
Sure.
In looking at the sample calendar that Principal Dowdy gave us earlier at the work session, I think that the teacher time, for teachers to get caught up with grading papers, professional development opportunities that will be offered, PLC meetings where teachers can collaborate from both of our high schools, not just Currituck, but we've got a lot of good things going on at NAP, and I think if we can get NAP teachers with CCHS teachers, and they can share and collaborate, I do think it's going to benefit our students, and I'm supportive of this.
Okay, my question is, and Mark, Sandy, maybe one of you two can answer it. If we do away with a half-day for the students, then we're gonna have to have them attend more days during the school year, because that wouldn't count as far as, you know, time or days, right?
Well, you can, you know, you can talk to that, but I mean, it's actually hours of education, and so there's been a little bit of revising of the internal schedule to put them in classes, more minutes, which resulted in more hours, and then we get the full-year schedule in four and a half days rather than in five. But Sandy can speak more to that.
Summarize that, it's, to answer your question directly, two half-days equal one full day in terms of hours, so it wouldn't have that kind of an impact. But to reiterate what Mr. Stefanik said, they reworked some of their scheduling to actually, they increased their instructional hours pretty significantly, to be honest with you, from the original calendar that we had to the calendar that you were presented with today. So, I think it shows that we're going to be able to have more quality time in the classroom, and I would advocate on behalf of our students that a teacher that has time for professional development and be able to collaborate with successful teachers is going to have even more quality instruction going on during the class times when they're there. I think your point is, Mr. Krotick, that to get the same amount of time and not have the buses running for a half-a-day rather than a full day, and I think that's a point well-taken.
That's part of my point. The other points are, I believe that if you're in there for a full day rather than two half-days, it's more meaningful. You carry more away. I also believe that when you're home half-a-day and you have idle time, so to speak, or time that you might have already been somewhere else where you're still a minor, you're more likely to find yourself involved with something that you ordinarily wouldn't. That's another aspect.
I understand.
And so, I'm also concerned that, I'm concerned with a lot of things about this, and I just don't feel like, I think, okay, we're possibly, we've been told no, but I, for life of me, can't wrap my brain around it yet, but I'm gonna wait and see. I don't understand how we're gonna have the different bus schedules that we are going to have to have in order to deal with the whole county school system that will be impacted, and not spend any more money. I don't understand that part either. So, I'm concerned about a vast number of things, not just saving money. Yeah, I'd like to save some money, but number one, I want to make sure we're getting the highest level of quality of service that we can, and I don't believe that that's what we're offering.
And again, your request for information on the transportation for a report, I think should definitely include just a summary of how efficiency is calculated. I'm not an expert on that, but I do know that the way we're funded, it's about the first run. If we make, we take kids, pick them up, bring them to school, and drop them off, then that's covered. And again, efficiency is kind of calculated into that. We're already running buses on Friday on a half-day schedule. We're already running it.
Yes, ma'am, but some of the buses that will be impacted were from some of the schools that weren't running on a half-day schedule. That's where I'm having a hard time with it.
It was two, three buses that...
Yes, ma'am, but even if it's one bus...
I understand.
That's more cost. That's what I'm saying.
But what I'm saying, no, I'm not gonna go into that, because I'm not an expert on that. I know enough to be dangerous, and I don't want to go down there and mislead you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think by having a report for that, we can...
Right, and as we said at the work session, I will get with the transportation supervisor, and they actually told me that the efficiency level is going up, and there'll be fewer buses on the road, but we want to see that whole report, and so I'll have them create a report, and we'll present that to the board.
I'm also excited, as Principal Dowdy mentioned earlier, that, you know, they were working towards some students having the opportunity to job shadow, like on Friday afternoon, whereas they're not able to do that now, and possibly offer some remediation to children, which is a real bonus, because not everyone can stay after school and get home after they get the help.
To reiterate what Principal Dowdy said, was really kind of capitalize on what's working at JP NAP.
Right, and Mr. Bassnight said that they already have that in place, and that they don't have to keep like major amounts of records that...
And you guys may be able to test that.
Guys couldn't see that firsthand.
Yeah, Tyler.
That you can stay if you need to, yeah.
How does that work at your school, the early release? Has it been positive, problems?
What normally happens, if you are caught up on your schoolwork, you go home with a bag of the buses like a normal day. However, if you're falling behind or feel that you need some extra help, what you can do is you can sign up with like a specific teacher, and granted, if they're not in like a PLC meeting, you'd have to go to them a little bit earlier, but you can still fit in that extra time and, you know, get that work done, or understand something you were having trouble with previously. That's the big bonus that we as students get. It's also a big bonus to clubs, as before, we would have to try and play around with like doing an after-school time, and that can be a lot harder to manage with certain schedules. They're already on the bus home, so they can't really make that, but with this schedule, if you stay back, and our schedule allows for that, they can stay for the extra three hours until 3:20, and then they can take that bus home. So, we get a lot more freedom with clubs, but it also, the main benefit is to academics.
And I'll just lastly say this, I'm not gonna try to keep dragging it on, but we're comparing JP NAP, we have to be accepted, to Currituck County High School, where the state mandate should go. And I'm not saying that one group is way vastly different than the other, but when you have to apply to be accepted to a school, and you're gonna make a comparison to another school, I don't think that's 100% accurate comparison. And so, coupled with not having a policy in place for attendance, when you don't have an excused number of absences before you don't pass on to the next grade, I see this as possibly problematic, meaning there's no, there's no repercussion if you don't attend and you have a bunch of unexcused absences. We don't have a level that we set in our attendance policy, and I see that this would possibly help people choose not to attend on Friday and have a three-day weekend.
Ms. Kinsel, how many students applied at NAP this year for the freshman class?
Do you know? I think it was around 84, 85.
And they accepted?
Oh, no, that's closer to the acceptance number. I think it was over 100, and then they were able to accept somewhere around 80 or 84.
The standards are the same.
The standards are the same, am I correct?
Yes, and I'd like to, there's a perception in our community, Mr. Krotick, that I think you're perpetuating by comparing the application and acceptance issues and process at JP NAP, that JP NAP is somehow better than Currituck County High School. And I choose to believe, and I know for a fact that we have equally talented teachers down there.
Absolutely.
And the fact that it, that these folks, and Jenna's not attending Currituck County High School as a default, she chose to be there herself because of what it offered her. And so, I think we have to try to level the playing field and be able to provide those same kinds of opportunities that we see as successful at JP NAP, to be able to provide the same opportunities and same level of education at our Currituck County High School, because there are students that choose to be there rather than JP NAP.
My daughter included.
First of all, I wasn't trying to give the perception that one was better than the other.
I understand.
I was just clearly pointing out that some students had to apply, and others did not. I wasn't saying that just because you went to Currituck County School, you were lesser than, so that's not the perception. What I was saying was, if you went the extra effort, kind of like showing up early is on time in some people's book, showing up late is on time in somebody else's book. The kids went through the extra effort to put forward the application to be accepted. That's all I was pointing out, and I was just pointing out that...
I know, but that perception and the way I'm receiving that is...
Perception, it's reality.
It is, and that's why I... I believe there's people that believe that because they have an application process, that that makes that school a better choice. And I'm just trying to clarify that, because I don't want to perpetuate that in our community.
I don't either, and I was just pointing out the fact that they had to go through that.
I understand.
And somehow or another, the math scores are vastly different, and somehow or another, we term it a early college. All this was done before I got here. I was just speaking to what actually occurs, and I was just telling you why I'm concerned. That's all. I'm not trying to give the perception that something's better than the other. I was just saying, when you have to go through extra efforts in order to achieve something, sometimes the results are different.
And again, we could argue, but I argue that possibly, perhaps those math scores are better, because those teachers have the opportunity to be able to analyze student data, sit down, work it out, and provide additional support.
Well, time will tell. I hope you're exactly right, because time will tell.
You're right.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree, and I appreciate your perspective, but I just...
But I'm not trying to give a perception. I was trying to paint reality. Reality is that, what I said.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't they have to select a cross-section of all students that apply?
It is supposed that their population is... It is supposed that their population is to be reflective of the community as a whole.
Yeah, cross-section, okay.
May I add something?
Sure, go ahead, Tyler.
Please.
Another big reason some students may choose to go to the high school, aside from that, may not just be because of an application, although it is daunting at first, it's also, say, you have a student whose interest is either in music, sports, or theater, that's something NAP doesn't offer, because we're such a rigor...we're very rigorous in academics. We focus on that, and that, because of that, we have to cut out other things. So I know people, I mean, Jenna is a perfect example. She doesn't want to, she wants, she needs both, because that's what she likes, that's her hobbies, that's what she does. She also, I know the high school also has college courses that we can take, that either can take, which is similar to what NAP has.
Roma, right.
Right. I just wanted to say that, yes, it is, they are putting in more effort to put in that application, but in the end result, people, there might not be, that might not be the reason, is because, not because it's daunting, but maybe, maybe because either they have, like, a different interest, like, they need to go to something that doesn't offer.
I totally respect that, and I understand that, sir.
I had something...
Jenna?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so as many of you know, I attend the high school, and not to be above myself, but I am near the top of my class, and I did choose, choose to go to the high school rather than the early college. And I just think that the early half-days on Fridays would be really beneficial to me, because I've had a full summer and have not had time to do some of the extracurriculars I like to do. So I think some of this time, I'm really looking to job shadow at a hospital to add to my college applications, which will help me hopefully get into better programs, which is something I wouldn't have time to do if I didn't have these half-days on Fridays. And I'm already planning on using these times for important things, like additional meetings with our student government, or just more time to spend in my classes, since I have more classes than a lot of the time in the school day. And then just hopefully filling out college applications also. So, I mean, I just think this time, it won't be wasted, especially, I mean, on our teachers' end, definitely not. I can see Ms. Doughty's planning a lot of things for her teachers. And on the student end, I think it'll be very beneficial, because I know there are definitely students who often slip through the cracks, and I think this will help teachers to pinpoint those students and give them the extra time they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna implement this and put it in place. If it's not working, or we see it's not going the way we like it to, we can change it. But I like to model what's working, whether it be in the classroom, whether it be at another school, when a teacher's, you know, the students are getting wonderful grades, how are they doing that? What's working for them? So when we see that this is working at JP NAP Early College, why not give it a try? All it can do is fail, and then we...
Adjust.
Regroup and adjust. So to me, and as far as the transportation, we have to follow state guidelines for transportation efficiency. There's no doubt in my mind that Ms. Doughty has done her homework, she's already, you know, spoken with transportation. If they've done the routes and the efficiency, because we depend on those state funds to get reimbursed because of our efficiency rating, we're not gonna put that in jeopardy. So I think that's already been worked out. And if we know that it's working at JP NAP Early College, I'm willing to give it a shot at the high school, where these kids could get more one-on-one help on Friday afternoons. As far as your two-hour concern, and the, or two or three hours, and the kids going home and twiddling their thumbs, I don't think that's gonna be the case. It may be for a few, but they're gonna be in the classroom, one-on-one, with their peers or with their teachers, getting the extra academic help that they need. So I'm all for it.
Yeah, and I think we need to remember that Mrs. Doughty was the principal at JP NAP, so she knows what she's doing. So I think we need, we owe it to her, to give her the opportunity to try this and prove that it will work for the high school. So I'm in favor also.
Yep.
Since she was there, I don't think she'd want to implement something that she...
Exactly.
...thought would fail. So, okay, do I have a motion for approval of the Kerr-Tuck County High School calendar?
I make a motion that we approve the Kerr-Tuck County High School calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, information items. Our next work session will be Thursday, September 7th, 2017, at the NAP Professional Learning Center at four o'clock. Board of Education meeting will be next, will be Thursday, September 7th, 2017, right here at 6:30, and we will have a student art reception, Thursday, September 7th, 2017, at the superintendent's office, and that will be at 5:30. Okay, next item, board member and superintendent comments. I'll start with the superintendent, so I don't forget him.
Thank you, Dr. Doughty.
How could you forget him?
I just have a quick comment, and some people, Mr. Kradic mentioned it at both meetings, and I appreciate that, and Karen made mention. But folks in the community sometimes say, what do people do over the summer? You know, why are, why is anybody, you know, in the schools over the summer, the kids are gone, why don't they just close them up and, you know, everybody take a summer break? This summer had, I guess I've had more of my eyes open, watching how many activities are going on to prepare for the next year. I know that, as a career educator, I know what goes on over the summer, but a lot of people just don't know. Between the high school administrative staff and secretary staff helping to paint the walls of the school, to give it, again, Jenna and Kealan, this is a surprise, so tell all your students, don't watch the video, don't, but to try to, you know, give some added excitement with the school spirit and school colors a little bit, you know, on the walls, and so they're doing that. We've got a treasures department monitoring the state budget and making sure that, you know, what rules get changed over there that we can manage, and again, to make sure we don't have to take anything away from the students. You know, make sure the program can stay intact and keep giving the offerings that they really, you know, want to have. You know, and then this year at the central office, we had one person missing, but it shows you how valuable each person is. I believe everybody's office at the central office was impacted, and they gave extra help to HR to make sure that in the busiest time of year for HR, when you're hiring new people, going through the interview process, doing background checks, and of course, the record-keeping that goes with all of that, everybody's been pitching in, trying to make sure that Mrs. Mackin and the HR department can keep their heads above water. So even though we're short some people, when the time comes, at the end of August, and for JP NAP today, you know, we're going to be ready for the students, and we're gonna be ready to start the school year. So I just want to give a thank you to everybody that works over the summers, because they've accomplished a monumental number of items this summer to be prepared.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kradic?
Well, I'd like to congratulate and welcome the two new board members, student board members. I'd like to ask that maybe we take this Kerr-Tuck County School's current expense, county allotment and fund balance history from 2007 to 2017, where it shows 2009 was last year receiving 1.49, 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollars. We lost a small rural funding. And I'd like us to post this on our website somewhere, so that the taxpayer and the parents and everyone can have this information at the fingertips, and they can do with it as they may, because this is, this is what's been going on. And, you know, when you want to understand why we have things that we wish that we had more of, this is a big reason why. And we need to do something about it. And, you know, I can only lead you to the information, you know? You gotta do something with it. But we've been working without 1.5 million dollars, without any adjustments, that's the state pulled that back, without any adjustments from the county, for eight years. So troubling. And obviously, I'm not in agreements with everything over here on this side, but I can't always have it my way, so I'm gonna try to, you know, keep doing what I believe in my heart. But it's tough to make up a loss of 1.5 million dollars without any adjustments anywhere else. I was asked that people look below the surface, don't believe everything you hear, seek the information and the data and verify it yourself. And I hope everybody's having a happy summer and a happy new school year, and God bless Kerr-Tuck County.
Ms. Rose?
Well, I'd like to welcome our new student board members, too. Looking forward to working with you. Had the opportunity to go to the JP NAP Early College this morning, saw a lot of excitement as they had their back-to-school meeting in the gym, and it was really neat to be a part of that. Over the summer, I've not been to a lot of the schools, but I have been out at the high school, and those folks have worked all summer long. I've seen the band out there practicing. I've seen football, doing conditioning. Volleyball's been doing conditioning, soccer, and they've had tryouts, I think, for all of those in the last week or so. I know FFA's been active. They went to state competition in Raleigh, and they went to, I believe it was called White Lake Camp this summer. The Booster Club has had a meeting. They have new officers. I'd like to encourage all parents of CCHS athletes to join the Booster Club and really take part and volunteer. They need your help, and their athletes benefit from it.
Thank you. Ms. Audrey?
Yes, I would just like to thank you both for your input concerning NAP Early College and Kerr-Tuck County High School as well. Welcome, new student board members. I look forward to working with you, and I'm so glad to have all of you on the board, because your input is vital. I would also like to hope and pray that everybody's had a wonderful summer. It's come to an end already, not for the high school, Kerr-Tuck County High School teachers, but of course, NAP, it's just flown by. June and July is just, just gone, gone by too quickly. I hope that all of the student staff at JP NAP had a wonderful first day, and it sounds like that they did. And I welcome, welcome you all back, and I just hope everybody has had a wonderful summer, and the next couple of weeks, enjoy it, because the high school will be back in session soon. Thank you.
Ms. Craft?
Yes, I also attended JP NAP Early College convocation today. The enthusiasm was phenomenal. It was wonderful. I want to welcome back to JP NAP the students, faculty, and staff, and to the rest of you, please enjoy the last weeks of your summer break.
I also want to welcome our new student board members, and I want to say to Tyler and Jenna that it's never easy to voice your opinions and maybe disagree with adults, but you did it great. You were respectful, and we appreciate that, and we're glad you're taking your job seriously.
Great, thank you. I would just like to add on to what Mr. Kradic had said earlier. We received small schools' funding, which was a million and a half dollars a year. We received that for about 15 years. Well, with small schools' funding, our school system got larger, so we did not qualify for it anymore. And so in 2009, we lost a million and a half dollars that we had received every single year for about 15 years. The only place to make that up would be our local budget. Our local budget at that time was eight and a half million dollars. So to completely assume that, that would be 18% of our local budget, and there's no way, you know, mathematically, that you can make that happen. And so we have been, for the last eight years, trying to accommodate for that loss of small schools' funding. And I would say we've done a very good job at that, because in eight years, a million and a half dollar loss comes out to 12 million dollars that we've had to accommodate for, you know, within our local budget. So I thank you for bringing that up. So I feel sorry for Mr. Stefanik, because I had the benefit when I was superintendent of having the small schools' funds, and right now, we're having to do without. So, and I'd like to wish everybody a safe, happy, healthy new school year. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.